You ready? You ready, Leilani? Okay, I'll call the March 10 study session of the City Council Newport Beach to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council or, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Curry is absent.
Okay. First item of business is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilman Daigle?
Yes, on number 11, the EQUAC appointment, there just kind of seems to be this musical chairs with where the EQUAC seats and it's been a little difficult to follow, but my question is, in the future, when there's at-large positions or community positions open, if maybe all the council can be notified? Or maybe some explanation of how these chairs are moving?
We can do that in the future.
Okay, thank you.
What we typically do is just take applications that are on file with the city clerk and then they're reviewed by EQUAC and they make their recommendations to the council.
Okay.
But if, I guess if we let you know, then you would have an opportunity to let us know if there are others.
Yeah, occasionally, you know, as with everyone, you know, residents in our district want to serve on a committee. It's a good, sometimes a good place to start, so, thank you.
Councilman Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilman Webb?
Nothing.
Councilman Hen?
Two things. On item number eight, I intend to pull that tonight at council because I would like a little better explanation of why we are just, I realize this is joint with Costa Mesa, but why we're just blithely going ahead and renewing that for another year when we seem to be in such a favorable environment for bidding things out. And so we're just going ahead with a 3% increase here. And I'd like a little more explanation on that point. Why it wasn't a good idea to just go ahead and bid. And then on item number 15, the CVB contract, I think we could use, I realize there's been some email traffic here. I think we could use just a little more information about our CVB contract, at least in terms of how much money did they get paid in the last year or two and what do we think it looks like going forward? Because my guess is although they might have gotten paid a lot of money in the last year or two, the outlook going forward isn't so bright. And it might be nice to have a view of the good and the bad of that in terms of the amount of money that's being expended. So, just a little more background behind it. So, maybe you were planning to do that already, but I would like to do that.
Okay, Councilman Rosensky?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, and I have nothing?
Mr. Mayor, while we're talking about items and even items off the agenda, I just want to let council know that I intend to pull item number 18 and we'll bring it back at a later time.
Okay. Okay, next item is item number two on the agenda, consideration of additional smoking prohibitions.
Mr. Mayor, the Environmental Quality Affairs Committee, EQUAC, started a discussion of the possibility of the city adding to its smoking prohibitions. And they were enthusiastic pretty quickly about moving ahead with that and so recommended that the city council consider it at a study session. What we have in place now are prohibitions in elevators, public areas of hospital and healthcare facilities, hospital rooms with two or more patients, public meeting rooms, theaters, auditoriums, public restrooms, indoor service lines and indoor restaurants. And then we also have in another chapter, the municipal code, prohibition of smoking on beaches, including the walkways in strands, piers, public floats, wharves and Inspiration Point and Lookout Point. And I've attached to the report for you a summary of smoking prohibitions in other cities in California. And they range from adding on outdoor dining areas all the way to the most restrictive one that we found was Belmont, which prohibits smoking in individual residential units that share at least one common floor or ceiling with another unit. EQUAC felt that adding any prohibitions to residential uses was going too far, but they supported prohibiting smoking in public places such as parks, outdoor dining areas.
Okay. All right, that's the staff report. Councilman Gardner?
Well, I was a little surprised because I put this in my newsletter and assuming anybody reads it. I expected just my email box to be full and I've gotten two responses, both negative.
I've gotten two responses, both positive.
So, I was really hoping that there'd be a lot of discussion because to me, particularly expanding it to the parks seemed like a very sensible thing to do. We have it in two of the parks, in Little Parks and Corona Del Mar. And that's, of course, where kids are. But it was, in EQUAC, it was certainly, I think there was a lot of support also, Mike, for the outdoor dining areas, that people felt they had become smoking areas and they weren't no longer outdoor dining areas, but they were just for smokers.
Yeah, I think there was some surprise that to the effect that it would be banned inside restaurants and not in the outdoor dining areas. But Sharon, I guess, I was surprised in your staff report, the list of places where it's already banned, it was a longer list than I was expecting to see. Did most of those places drive out of the state law in terms of restricting smoking?
What's already in our municipal code?
Yes.
I don't know, other than the indoor dining, which is in state law.
Most of them come from the ban of no smoking on the beach and we just kind of expanding that. We expanded that to the sidewalks and then the piers.
The ones in chapter 11, I believe that's the case, but the prohibitions in chapter six, I know that the indoor dining is implementing state law, but I'm not sure about the origin of the others.
Well, there are a number of restrictions in state law, like in commercial or office environments. You know, they can only be within so many feet of a doorway and things like that. And that's not city to city, is it?
When I look at the different cities ordinances, some have those provisions and some do not.
I know, but hasn't, well, just because the city doesn't have them doesn't mean that the state hasn't prohibited them.
Is there a provision?
State law supersedes any local ordinance.
Yeah, I did not do research into state law.
Okay, because I think there are a number of prohibitions on the state level as well.
I guess one of the concerns I have, from my own personal experience, is that the places that bother me the most is not a public park because you're just so out in the open, except for the debris that's left behind. So, it would only be, for me, that a public park would only be a litter problem. But the places that bother me most are right outside the store, a store where the employees can't smoke inside and they go and sit right next to the outside of the store and you have an overhang and the smoke just hangs there. And so that, I was interested to see, Santa Monica has a specific requirement that no smoking within 20 feet of exits, open windows of buildings which are open to the public. And I would like to see us explore something like that.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of having a deeper exploration of this and perhaps even a draft ordinance to deal with it on the basis. I do agree with EQUAC that it's a bridge too far to try and be restricting what goes on on private property beyond anything that we already restrict. But it seems to me, you know, 82% of Californians do not smoke. It seems to me that this issue of infringing on personal liberties needs to stop short where there is involuntary exposure to health hazards to those that don't. And I think the public has a right to be moved about freely in public spaces and not be involuntarily exposed to health hazards. I think the litter issue is also a significant thing. It's not just the litter, it's environmental as well. And so there's a number of derivative problems associated with this that I would like at some point for us to turn over. The issue that kind of goes the other way here is we do have a very vibrant hospitality industry here in Newport Beach and I do worry about impacts on our hospitality industry, especially in today's environment. But, so I'd like to hear from them, too. And so I think the way to surface that is to put something on the table by way of a construct for us to consider.
It's going to kill the French market.
Oh, the Asian market, too. A lot of the Asian folks like to smoke.
I had one restaurant owner who didn't want to have his name published at this point, but he said he would love for the city to ban it in the outdoor eating areas because it took the onus off of him, that he could then say, "What can I do, the city?" One issue that did come up with the people who were opposed to it was enforcement. Because they say, you know, "We're always passing things and we're not enforcing." And that was an issue when the smoking on the beaches came up. And we know that. We know our police department is not going to be focused on enforcing, walking up and down the sand and nabbing every smoker in the same, if we expand it. But it does give the individual, and I have used this, the ability to say to that person who is smoking on the beach and using the beach as an ashtray, "Gee, in Newport Beach, you're not allowed to smoke on the beach." That doesn't necessarily get any response, but at least they will move or perhaps dispose of their cigarettes a little bit better. So, I think that the enforcement argument is not necessarily a determining one.
Well, I actually asked the police department how many smoking citations have issued and they came up in the last three years, 105, which actually surprised me.
Wow, actually surprised me.
I did not think it would be anywhere near that, 105 since April of 2006.
Yeah, you know, and I'll just pick up where, Nancy, sorry. Senior moment here. Nancy left off. You know, when we looked at the smoking ban, and I remember the chief came up and it looked like it was going to go down and I said to him, I said, you know, "Just by putting no smoking on the sign, what kind of compliance could we expect without really any enforcement at all?" And he said 70 to 80%. And I said, "Well, if we can get 70 to 80% of the people to stop smoking on the beach, isn't that a win?" And I think the rest of the council agreed and we voted in favor of it. And so to me, you know, it really just sets a tone for the community. It sets a direction. You know, years ago, and I wasn't involved in city government, then probably none of us, you know, when they talked about the ban on smoking in restaurants.
You're not still involved in city government?
Years ago when I was not involved.
Oh.
No, I am now, when I was not involved in city government years ago. But there was, you know, they talked about the ban on restaurants and they, everybody said, "Oh, the sky is falling and, you know, the restaurant industry is going to go out of existence because people can smoke in restaurants." And, you know, I think it was about a week of hair pulling after the ordinance went into effect and everything was fine. So, you know, I, too, I think that, you know, reaching into people's homes is probably overreaching. You know, maybe the hotel, because it is a residence of a type, would be an exception as well because, you know, people are coming here and staying in the community. Maybe not in the lobby, maybe lobby they can't smoke, maybe up in the room, if they want to smoke, they can smoke. But I certainly would entertain further exploration of this issue in a possible ordinance, you know, focused more on the public areas in town.
You know, just one more quick follow-up on the enforcement thing. You know, we have speed laws, for example, and I'm, although I've been the unfortunate recipient of a ticket or two over the years, I'm okay with the police using their discretion in the enforcement of our laws. You know, not too many tickets are written for 35 and a 30, although that's just as much a violation of the speed law as 45 and a 30. But I think if you've got something on the books here regarding smoking, I'm happy to, for the police to enforce it within their discretion where they see an egregious issue of some sort. I think that's what we're really trying to address here, so.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of comments if I may. One, getting back to the enforcement issue, I think we have a different enforcement tool than we had for the beach and that is the park rangers. And the park rangers do go about, and the reason we had that program developed was to make sure that people were playing by the rules as far as scheduling and who got parks and making sure that those who went through the process and reserve parks and even portions of parks for birthday parties and that, that went pretty smoothly and I think it has. The park rangers, again, if the expectation from council and the community was that they would get heavy into enforcement would really change what they do. I'm not saying that they can't do it, but it would change basically how they do their job and what they're looking for and the contacts that they have with people. The other issue I want to bring up, and this is neither good nor bad, but all of the parks, you know, would need to be signed as far as no smoking. So, the question is, you know, does that go on existing signage? Does it go on new signage? How much signage in the park based upon where people are going to be parking and where they can see the signs? So, that is another issue that would need to be worked out.
Okay. Well, I can see I'm in the minority here, but I'm generally not in favor of pursuing this. I just don't see what it's really going to accomplish and it's just, you know, we've got so many other things to do with our staff, time and resources that getting into something like this, I just, I don't, I don't really see what it's going to accomplish. I think probably, no matter what we come up with, that we'll get resistance from the restaurant industry so we probably aren't going to deal with outdoor dining, although maybe we will. But I suspect there'll be some resistance in spite of the one guy that you talked to of including those areas. My observation of the outdoor dining is that's one of the reasons a lot of these restaurants have opened outdoor dining areas is to have a place for people to go smoke, so. I don't know, I guess we'll, I guess we'll see on that, on that aspect of it. Like I said, I was surprised that we had as much enforcement and citations that were issued on the, particularly on the beach area of things, because my support of that was more on the littering end of things as opposed to the secondhand smoke aspect of it. But I guess we'll see where it goes.
Yeah, I would share that view. I mean, I think you kind of start then people saying, "Well, you know, I'm annoyed by too much perfume" or Aqua Velva or whatever. I mean, everyone has their kind of thing that they're annoyed by that happens in public places. So, that would be the first concern. And the second concern is, I really haven't heard from any citizens that are clamoring to do this. And so why impose additional regulation if the people that we represent aren't asking for it? So, those would be some of my concerns.
I see a few people out there, I think there might be. Okay, does anyone want to address the council on this issue? Please step forward. State your name for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Deanna Foff Martin. Hi, Homer. I had spoken before in support of no smoking bans. And I've met with Homer and I continue to be bombarded with cigarette smoke in multifamily housing condominiums with marijuana and cigarette smoking from my neighbors below. And I thank you all for looking into supporting the ban in public areas. And I know Edward and Leslie, you're not seeing that it can be irritating if it's you that's being bothered. And, you know, I'm having difficulty with my nose, the closets open up and your clothes stink. And, you know, this is an area I hope that you could address. And I understand it's a privacy issue, but it's my privacy as well and also the home value of my unit. And the neighbors claim they have a smoking medical permit. And the people that are smoking marijuana are in their 60s and the families in their mid-80s. But I thank you very much for supporting this talk and I hope to see you again for some advancements in this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Can you move the microphone over so we can?
Sure, please. My name is Mohammed Faruzish. I live in Newport Beach in Corona Del Mar. I'm a professor in public health from California State University Long Beach. I actually presented to the Santa Monica City Council on the smoking, outdoor smoking bans. And I really, first of all, want to thank all of you for taking on this issue. It's a national public health affecting our children, our families and those who are innocent bystanders who have to inhale the smoking. Tobacco is a poison and it should be eliminated in our environment. And when I spoke to the city council in Santa Monica, their concern was the businesses are going to lose. And as you know, Santa Monica, like us, is an international town and city. People around the world are visiting. But this is a health issue and it's a global issue. And it is our, is a quality of life issue for people that live in Newport Beach. So, I hope you consider this. And I'm very proud to live in this town for the fact that I know you are safeguarding our community. And I would be surprised to get opposition from businesses because businesses welcome the chance to be able to provide a safe environment for their clients. If you drive through PCH and see, for example, a Starbucks coffee shop, you will realize that people who attempt to smoke outdoor, you can see the smoke surrounds everyone who's sitting around them. And no one has a right to tell them not to. So, I think if you pass this ordinance, it would give us citizens in town, residents, who could really walk up to someone and express discontent for their behavior and give us the legitimacy to protect our children and the family members. I want to thank you very much for consideration.
Thank you.
Members of the council and staff, my name is Ken Dralijak and I'm chairman of the Environmental Quality Affairs Committee. I'd like to just comment on the meeting that's discussed in the staff report and say that the staff report, I think fairly, describes what happened in our EQUAC meeting of February 23rd where we voted that we would like to see the city move in this direction. We gave notice to our members about a month's worth so that they could think about this situation. And they came back a month later and we had a open discussion about the issue. And just in case you're interested about community involvement, we are, we are 20 people, more or less, two from each council district, three environmental specialists and three currently homeowner association people. So, we're 20 people who are a broad range of citizens from around the community who discussed this thing and thought seriously enough about it that it should be brought to your attention. And we want to bring it to your attention. We want to suggest that you ought to do something to try to control outdoor smoking in the areas where you have jurisdiction. Now, we had a debate among ourselves and of course, we're not legal experts so we can't really deal with all the political and legal issues associated with this thing. But we know there are property rights and there are civil liberties issues having to do with whether or not you move into private property. But it seemed to us that you have a pretty clear authority in areas where you have clear jurisdiction to do something. And in those areas, we think that would be useful even if you don't go into common areas of residences or even businesses that are adjacent to city properties. If you did just where you have clear jurisdiction, which we, city buildings and properties, city streets, sidewalks and alleys, parks and hiking trails, piers and boardwalks. If you did those things where you have clear jurisdiction, it seems to me, it seems to us that you would have made a major contribution and a big step forward in erasing some of the concerns that citizens may have. Now, you know from the staff report that you would not be alone in doing this kind of thing. As you know, California, in, California, the state of California enacted ordinances or enacted laws, legislation as far back as 1994 with respect to workplace smoking, amended it in 98 for bars, added a 2008 issue with respect to smoking in cars where minors are involved. At least 13 other cities that we've been able to find within California have taken some kind of action. And the actions vary all the way from public parks and beaches and so on, which we think is a relatively simple thing to do, to inside apartments and condos, inside residential common areas, Calabasas, multifamily common areas, Glendale, multifamily common areas, Belmont, inside apartments and condos. It's amazing to me that they could go that far, actually. And I think it would be maybe an issue to go that far. But if you were to stay within the area where you have clear jurisdiction, it seems to me you would have met the intention of what we had hoped to accomplish that night. And we appreciate your consideration of our recommendation. Thank you.
Excuse me. When you say public, what about the public areas and shopping centers?
Oh, I have, some of the cities, Burbank, for example, has an item in their ordinance about outdoor dining areas, outdoor service areas, outdoor shopping areas. So, their ordinance does include that. I haven't done a total research in that area, but here's Glendale, including in their ordinance, enclosed and unenclosed public places.
I don't know exactly what it means. I mentioned earlier, Santa Monica also has something within 20 feet.
Yeah, outdoor dining areas in Santa Monica, the street, Farmers Market, those are all commercial areas.
When you do, and I'm assuming we're going to bring this back for something based upon head count here, could you give us kind of a recap of what the state regulations are? Because I think there are fairly numerous. Though I know you don't know now, I'm saying when you bring it back, I'd like to know what all the regulations are.
Before it does come back.
See if anyone else wants to speak. Anyone else want to speak? Okay, close the public comment.
Before it does come back, I'd ask the city manager if through his newsletter you can sort of get some sense of where our community might be and maybe just kind of put it out there that a citizens committee has asked the council to consider a ban on leaf blowers and a ban on smoking. And, you know, before the council does that, we're really interested in your input. And then that way, you know, we can get some feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say that I have the, my own personal non-smoking ordinance. When it's bothering me, I get up and move out of the way of the smoke and go somewhere else. And it seems to work. And it says here, "The primary reason is to protect people from effects of secondhand smoke and when you're outside, it dissipates." So, I guess I don't get it.
Well, I think that we'll probably be able to get more information on that, perhaps from one of our residents when that time comes about, just how diffuse the danger becomes. So, I don't know myself, but I'm sure we can get more information on that.
Yeah, and quite honestly, I, you know, putting the secondhand smoke issue aside, even if, let's say, you can smell the smoke, but it's not hazardous to you. This is like, you know.
It's an irritant.
It's an irritant, it's like the dog barking next door and we regulate that. And it's like some other irritants that we do regulate because, you know, we all have to kind of get along in the space that we have. And yes, this is pushing the boundaries a little further away from smokers' rights towards other people's rights. But I, so I, you know, even aside from the greenhouse, I mean, the, my greenhouse, let's not bring that into it, the secondhand smoke argument, I think that there's an issue there with, with just, you know, why should you have to get up and move when they're clearly inconveniencing you? I mean, you're gracious about it and you do that and I do that as well and I'm sure many people do. But why should we have to do that? I guess that comes down, that's the crux of the argument. Why should they have to move? Let them go home.
Why should I have to get up and move at the beach when the wind blows the smoke from the fire rings in my direction?
Well, ask the coastal commission.
Well, that's the really kind of part of the issue is the irritant factor. I mean, there's like 50 things that would irritate me before smoke.
Yeah.
So, what do you do? I'll start regulating those.
Well, although if Aqua Velva were determined to be a health hazard, I'd throw that in the air.
Are you sure it's not?
How about Old Spice?
I would only state for the record that reform and Aqua Velva are indeed banned substances in San Francisco.
Well, the other thing, too, when you get prospiration in Aqua Velva, that it's even more potent.
I guess I have a problem with 17% of the people impacting 83% of the people with their inconsiderate habits. But I think we ought to go forward on this.
Okay, well, I think staff pretty well has their direction on it. Yes?
Do you want to tell us what to include in the draft ordinance? Or should be, we include just about everything but residential and it's easier for you to take things out than to add them? Okay, we will be back.
Probably like a menu of potential bans.
I think those that like, you know, if you're, you know, I presume you include the outdoor dining, you'll include it. And if the restaurant industry has a problem with it, I'm sure they'll not be shy in letting us know.
And within, say, 40 feet of a public entrance and windows and that kind of stuff. Yeah, 40. 20 is too narrow with sidewalk.
Okay, any other comments on this item? All right. We'll go to the next item on our agenda, which is the report on current economic trends.
I'd like to register a complaint, there is no coffee. Machine's broken, okay. There's no coffee? We're cutting back, see?
This item is here resulting from a request from council member Daigle for some information on how some indicators in Newport Beach are doing in the current economy. on how some indicators in Newport Beach are doing in the current economy. And the first one that we looked at was commercial vacancies, and we were able to do this because just within the past year, we've subscribed for, with CoStar for information on commercial real estate in town, so that's been helpful. Citywide, we are at about eight percent vacant, and that's the number of buildings, not the amount of space that that's based on. In the first quarter of two thousand nine, it's not the highest that it's been in recent times. We were at eleven percent at the end of two thousand two. We thought that the, the citywide number is skewed downward a little bit, though, when it's based on number of buildings, because we have so many small commercial spaces. And so we took a look at a couple of the areas with larger commercial space, Newport Center and the airport area, and those vacancy rates are a little bit higher at ten percent and fifteen percent respectively. And in the case of Newport Center, it's just under the highest that they have seen, and for the airport area, this, this is as high as we've seen it within the past nine or ten years. The next area that we looked at was building permits, and while we have seen the number of.
Aaron, before you go on, the smaller areas, how recent is this? This information is just, is it really pretty current? Because I mean, I'm walking around Corona del Mar looking, and it seems like there are so many vacancies.
This is first quarter of two thousand nine. Now, if the space is vacant but hasn't been listed with a broker for, for lease or for rent, then CoStar may not be picking it up. They search all of the brokerage databases. They also go out and drive the community to pick up more, but it's, it's still possible that they aren't picking everything if it isn't being actively marketed.
Yeah, I appreciate that point, because I was thinking what would have is more of a windshield survey than checking with CoStar, because I went down to CDM today, and I saw a couple vacancies, and I was going to go on the CoStar database, but I don't have access to it, and then I just sort of started this thought process of what is it that CoStar really captures? And, you know, when I saw those signs that, that weren't being directed to a brokerage, you know, is CoStar gonna, gonna capture that? And then, you know, then you get into how really reliable is this data?
Well, CoStar is clearly, if not the, certainly one of two services that are very widely used and relied upon in the commercial and retail brokerage industry, I'll tell you that, it's sort of the gold standard.
It, it is probably just not as, quite as accurate as far as the smaller market, where you used to say it may not be listed with the broker, and they wouldn't, where, where that would be valuable is through the walk or the, as you say, the windshield.
Yeah, and even though the actual vacancy rate might not be reflected in CoStar, because they don't pick up these smaller listings, or many of those buildings or properties in Corona del Mar are probably being leased by their owners as opposed to using, it does show the trend as to where it's going. Clearly, the trend is to higher vacancies. I, I've seen it in West Newport as well, that there's, you know, some storefronts now that are open, and whereas typically they get leased up a lot quicker.
We, we've seen a decrease in the number of permits issued, and it's been steady over the past few years. However, the construction valuation and the fees that we're receiving in the building department haven't decreased as much or as steadily, as you can see from the charts that were included. They've gone down and come back up, and it's, and it's been an up and down kind of thing. So we'll see what happens when we close out this fiscal year.
Is that being bolstered by like maybe a few major projects that, that go on, like the stuff that the Irvine Company's doing in Newport Center and things like that?
Yeah, often it is. Sometimes when you'll see a year that has a real peak, that could be something that the Irvine Company is doing or a major office building. I'm sure that when we issue the permit for the Nordstrom in Fashion Island, that's going to bump us up for that month, and so that will probably help our numbers for this fiscal year.
This idea that the, the projects are, are larger, I guess I have a hard time with that unless it's sort of been looked at across the board. I mean, once you take away, you know, Big Canyon Country Club, Lexus, Nordstrom, Pacific Club, you know, and then you sort of get down to, is the midpoint project's really kind of the same size?
Well, we've still seen some office buildings in Corporate Plaza, and the Irvine Company has taken out some building permits for the work that's already underway in Fashion Island even before the, the shell for the Nordstrom. So there have been quite a few big ones, and that's the only explanation of the number of permits being issued is down more than, than the revenue and the valuation is.
I think it probably has something to do with the longer lead time. The larger the project, maybe the longer lead time, too, so you tee it up, and it takes maybe three years in order to get there. And I think some people are feeling like, you know, now we, we need to go ahead because we went through that process, and we planned on it, and we're gonna do it.
Where I was kind of going is when we're preparing the budgets, if any adjustments are necessary, if, you know, if the workloads are really down, then if you would make, and, you know, if you would consider any adjustments as far as resources.
Look at that.
In business license activity, the number of new licenses is higher this fiscal year to date than last fiscal year. We've seen some reduction in the number of renewals, both in the number of renewals and the revenue that we've received from renewals. And in talking to Glenn Everode, that seems to be, when you come into town and open a business, you know that you must get a business license, and so people are diligent about that. And if you're a business already in operation and you may be struggling a bit, then the city's renewal bill might not be the first one you pay. So the staff and revenue is spending more time in the field to make sure that renewals stay current.
Is that quite an increase, though, in the new licenses? Is that because so many people are out of jobs and trying to start businesses? I mean, is there any?
It's because of Glenn. Here he comes. He's our, he's our business license veteran warrior.
I'd love to take credit for it all, Councilman Rosansky, but I can't, I've got it, we have.
Glenn and his staff.
It's Glenn's staff that actually is really doing the heavy lifting with regards to identifying new businesses to community. As council's very well aware, I think we have recently had access to data that wasn't previously available to the city from the franchise tax board, and we've become very proficient using that data to identify new businesses early on rather than after they've been in the community for some period of time. So I think that's contributed a great deal to the number of new business licenses that we've identified more recently.
Utility delinquencies don't seem to be showing a problem. We're actually increasing in, in, well, delinquent payments increased just a one percent, a negligible amount, and the number of shut-off student non-payment is down from the previous year. And that was the information that was specifically requested, but recently the Economic Development Committee had some discussions on this, and they asked, I'm sorry, okay, they, they asked representatives from each of their geographic and business areas to make two-minute reports on how things are going in their areas, and understand that these are all anecdotal. Some of them went around and talked to some businesses or maybe had a conversation at the bid board meeting or something. And so we're showing that in the older commercial areas, they're seeing that their business is down in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen percent. Restaurant business, maybe a little bit more than that. The report from the Conference and Visitors Bureau was that they, at least as of last summer, had still been doing well with group businesses, and they did a, a strong marketing effort to get the drive market, and so that was keeping our numbers up at least at that time. It was interesting that both the representative from Balboa Island and I think the representative from the Restaurant Association commented that vacation rentals on Balboa Island were down about thirty percent, and we didn't hear that from the Peninsula, which is another area with a lot of that kind of activity.
Actually, I've talked to Craig Batley, who runs Burr White Realty, who has the vast majority of those, of Peninsula rentals, and he said that people are pretty much re-renting, but a lot of them are asking for reduced rents, concessions, so.
And then the EDC talked about what, if anything, the, the city should or could be doing, and they discussed a few ideas, and the recommendation that they forwarded to the council and you did take action on was to extend the time allowed for temporary banners. And that was adopted in October of two thousand eight, and that continues through December of two thousand nine. And we have heard a, a few positive comments from business owners on that. I don't know that we've actually seen a lot more permit activity and a lot more banners out there, but I think that the businesses were appreciative that that opportunity is available.
Okay, any comments?
I did a question back on the utilities one, where it's indicated it's decreased by twelve percent. Is there like an actual number per month of shut-offs that the city is doing?
The number of shut-off, utility shut-off, that number has decreased, and I think in large part because through the cost study, there's been identification by the consultants that. We have increased costs there, so council, when they adopted the most recent fee schedule, increased that charge for recovery of costs associated with shutting water off, and I think that's contributed in large part to the decrease.
Okay, my question was, do you know what the number is per month?
I do, not in hand. I can, I think we provided that to, okay, if you'd like, I can get that for you.
Okay, I can follow up afterwards, and then is the, when you shut somebody's water off, is it, do you, is there any sort of characteristics, like how old that person is or anything like that?
Yeah, we don't follow the demographics there, but I will relate that if someone is, if the issue is hardship.
Right.
We do everything we can to work that out so that we don't shut water off, so they don't incur the additional costs of the reconnection. So if someone, you know, has a hardship issue, we hear those frequently, and even before current economic times, we'll work out repayment plans, and municipal code provides for that.
Okay, because that's, was one of my main concerns, is some of the old folks have hit hard times and they're getting their water shut off, but from what you're saying, you're willing to work with them?
Absolutely. In fact, municipal code directs us to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think that it's even further than that, as far as, it's not just because you don't pay your bill one month. In order to get your water shut off, you have to be delinquent and, and have to have been contacted and refused to, to pay, and, and there's, I don't know, there's an entire process that is quite lengthy.
We make, we make no fewer than four contacts with the customer prior to discontinuing water service for non-payment, and, and the amount owed has to exceed fifty dollars before we even start that process.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, does anyone from the public want to comment on current economic trends? Okay, seeing no one, we'll come back to council. Any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session.
Mary Lee needs to have a picture of the council to put in the budget, so I would please entertain that you gather in front of the flag chair and go work towards very quickly getting.